I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Jeff, did you have opening remarks?
No, I figured I would do those once we get into the reports.
Okay. All right, so we have no, Jeff's gonna move, is not gonna do a remark right now, so do I have any public participation? All right. Then we will move on to item four, which is Special Education Workshop. Item A, the first up, is our current financial, fiscal year 2019-2020 Special Education Budget.
So, we've prepared a presentation, and we're gonna cover each one of these items that you see before you in the agenda, and I'm gonna start out with information up on the board behind me, it's also in the packets that we have for everybody at the board, and there's packets for the public right over on the end of the bookcase here as well. So, first up is questions shared by the Board of Ed, and just going to put these up, just as a reference, we will get to these questions during the course of the presentation, those that we don't get to in the presentation, we'll definitely cover by the end. Any other questions the Board has at any point, please interject and just ask them. And the first item that I want to share with you, related to one of the questions from the Board was about laws that govern special education. There really is not any other portion of education that's governed more by law than special education, and one of the unique aspects of special education laws is governed much more so by federal law than state. Most of our mandates, if you've been to numerous board meetings, you'll hear a lot about state mandates and unfunded mandates from the state, special ed is different. It's much more from the federal level than it is from the state level. And within that IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, is the overarching law that governs the decisions that are made within special education programming. One of the things that occurs, just as one example of how the process works, is I will get questions every once in a while from a parent about a PPT, and resulting IEP, an Individual Education Plan created for a child, and my response is I will listen in to the concerns and listen attentively. At the end of the day, no one other than that team, that Planning and Placement Team, can make decisions about the IEP, the superintendent nor anyone else, and that's the way IDEA is written, it has to be that team working together for the best interests of the child, and it's set up in a team process for a reason, it's got all the key players collaboratively working together, the parents, the administrative, special education, our school psychologist, classroom teacher, all the key individuals to ultimately make the best program for the child. So here are a list of updates and changes we've made since last spring regarding the budgeting process for special education. First, you'll see updated excess cost projections using five-year average. If you recall, previous to the revised projections we had done in April, we were using the previous year's per pupil cost, and the problem with that is it created an overly optimistic view of the excess grant funding that we would get in return. So we've moved to a five-year average so that we could take the increase over five years, apply that to our projections, and that's what we use to create our revised projections in April. We will be doing the same as we create next year's budget, so we have a more accurate view of the excess cost monies that we'll be receiving to offset our special education expenditures. We also revised the excess cost expenditure process, and I have a slide coming up in a moment to show you that specifically. Some of you might remember it from May, but I just wanted to give a reminder of how that looked. And then third item there is Special Education High Cost Detail, you're going to see that tonight. This is a variation of the spreadsheet that I created with staff in April of last year. Frank has done a wonderful job, he's added more detail than what I had shown the Board in April and May, and the Board of Finance as well, he's created a series of tabs for individual programs that feed into a master sheet. We will just be showing you a redacted version of the master sheet for student privacy, but just so you know and understand, there's an individual sheet for every student that we have in a high-cost program, so that we're able to track all that detail, have it go into one sheet that's used in common by our special education administrative staff and our finance department, the Assistant Superintendent and myself, so that there's a common point of reference by everybody involved. That sheet will also be referred to in the redacted form in a number of settings, and that refers to the next two bullets, monthly internal meetings that we have to review the special education budget, we've already implemented that process, and then that sheet will also be used for the monthly reports to the BOE. So again, we have a common reference, and within the sub-bullets for the BOE, it's that budget update where that sheet will be very critical, and that sheet will also refer to the second sub-bullet there, New Students and Programs, so we can see where we are in real time. It will be both used for projecting future expenditures as well as in accounting. At this point in the year, it's projections because all of these costs are very new, programs aren't fully established yet, so it will be projections based on our best estimates as to what those costs will be. As we get into November, it'll be much more about accounting, that's when we do our first submittal for the excess cost grant, so at that point, those numbers are much, much harder. But again, this sheet is all about both projections and accounting, so it's looking forward to give us a vision for where we're headed, but also an accurate look in the rearview mirror in terms of the actual costs that we have. And then third bullet from the bottom, an item in process Frank had shared at the last Board of Ed meeting, using Munis financials, and how that impacts our budget book for creating the budget for this coming year. Also included within that work is our excess cost grants will be included in Munis and are included in Munis now, they haven't been previously. So all those financials are included in one place within our financial software. And then ongoing, this is a really important part, and probably the most important of all these bullets, and that's our intervention work, and I know we use this word a lot, and unfortunately in this profession, we use a lot of acronyms, but one of the most important ones there is the SRBI, that's Scientifically Research-Based Intervention, and it's a really important thing that we do in regular education. And the reason why it's so important is the better that we do with our intervention work, the less referrals we have for students needing to have special education services, and that's better for the child in the end, and it's really an area where we've exercised a lot of our efforts, and as we saw with the recent Sback results, we're seeing some good returns there, and some good evidence that that work is working well because it's about providing individualized instruction based on students' specific needs. So that will continue to be a high priority for us in our serving children as we move forward. And then lastly, I did a little bit of data gathering with area superintendents, I had a meeting last week with the Southern Fairfield County Superintendents Association and the Western Connecticut Fairfield County Superintendents Association, we both was able to gather some data so we can see how we look compared to other districts related to some of the things that we do. So I'll be sharing that with you also. So two highlights here, as I mentioned, the second bullet, I wanted to give a refresher, and then the last one, the data gathering, we haven't seen before, the other items we've talked about in previous settings before. So this is just a reminder that one of the things we had changed last year is the top half of this screen shows our previous special ed expenditure process for excess cost grant, and within that old model, what we had is we had in the right yellow box there, we had an account for the grant funding, and then the left upper box in this slide, you'll see Special Education Operating Budget, and monies were drawn off of both those sources. And the problem with that setup is it was an opportunity for mistakes, and departments drawing from one while another department is drawing over another, it just was not good practice. So what we did is we changed that to the lower half, and we've already implemented it for this year, where all of those funds go into one line that we're gonna be drawing against, so in the initial part of the year, we're going to see a major deficit there because we have not received our excess cost grant as of yet, but once that money comes in, it will be a major offset, we'll see that account more whole, and we'll see these shifts back and forth, but the important thing is we're all looking at one line, so there's no confusion about where all those monies exist, they all exist in one place. Is there anything I'm leaving out with that, Frank? Okay. Next piece I have for you is a little bit about the data from surrounding districts, and this is exactly the way they came through from the districts, I didn't change it at all. So normally, we'll organize by dirgs, and with this, it just came in, in this very form, I did the color coding just to make it easier to see, but there were three important questions asked surrounding districts about how they manage their funding. The first column that you see there in the upper left, and I'll use the pointer here, do you budget for new students moving in with existing IEPs? And this is an important piece, I just recently, I was telling Kay and Darlene this morning, I just recently saw a list for the state of Connecticut, what are the most expensive IEPs in the state of Connecticut? I believe the highest one in the state of Connecticut was somewhere around $400,000 to $500,000 for one student in this state. It's not a child in Monroe, another part of the state. If that child's family moved to Monroe tomorrow, we're responsible for that whole IEP. We would get excess cost offset for that, but that would be a major impact, and this happens to districts all across the state, the child moves in, we're responsible for that IEP, we start working with the family, and through that PPT process, collectively we decide what changes will be made to that IEP moving forward, but this is a really important piece to understand.
Can I have a question on that?
Sure.
For the three districts who indicated that they do budget for new students moving in, how is it possible, if they're putting together a budget in December for the next year, they would have any clue of who would be moving in?
My understanding, I haven't spoken with all three of them, but the few that I have talked to have said to me that they put in placeholders, so they will guesstimate, you know, we think we're gonna have two students possibly in, we're gonna put in X amount to be able to compensate for no. And then you'll notice, there are not a lot of yeses there, it's predominantly nos. In the next column, do you budget for program changes, examples, new outplacements or changes in outplacements during the year for students you already have in district? And as you can see in this column, most of them are yeses, there's two nos, Sherman is a no. Sherman is a very, very small district, it's literally a one-school district, there's only one building in the district, it's under 300 students, so really not the best comparison to us, but again, for full disclosure, this is the information provided by the superintendents in those two associations, and I want to share everything that was presented to us. We do not either, we do not budget for that either. And then in terms of contingency, do you budget additional special education contingency funds beyond those captured in the above two questions? You can see that there's a few yeses there, and I put an asterisk for ours because Board of Finance has said, and I confirmed this, I called Mike Manjus today and I confirmed it with him today, the Board of Finance has budgeted contingency for our special ed. So that is a contingency we have through Board of Finance, but in terms of our own operating budget, we don't carry a contingency for that purpose. Just a couple other things I'll share on this anecdotally, Region 15, which is Southberry, Middlebury, he just responded today, rather than yes, nos, he gave me a lot of narrative. The one detail that was interesting that I wanted to share in this setting is he said that yes, they do budget a contingency, last year they budgeted a $125,000 contingency. He told me two weeks after the budget was passed in referendum, they had surpassed the contingency because they had two new outplacements. So these things happen, and all of, this is a struggle that many districts are having in terms of how to manage these budgetary challenges within special education.
So can I go back to the middle column?
Sure.
So if we know in December that we have a student who's gonna be moving to the next level, we don't put that in our, we don't use that as our budget? I thought we budget for who we have in the district and anticipating if we know that there's a change.
Correct, but there are several, as I said to you when we did the first workshop about the 12 pages of IEP, when we meet annually with parents, sorry, when we meet annually with parents, what we put in the budget for December and what we think is going to happen, we budget for. However, a lot happens from December to June is what Jack is talking, that's the column Jack's talking about. We have kids that we're gonna show you later in our slide that we did not know about, their programs changed completely after having an annual review.
Right, but I'm sure that all the districts have that, because nobody could possibly predict if some change is going to happen that they don't know about, they would only, you know, so I kind of question all the yeses and us being a no, because we do do that, and of course, nobody's gonna know if some change happens that in June that they don't anticipate in December.
Right. But Donna, and again, I don't wanna, it's one way or the other, but we don't anticipate a change in placement in December. We take where they are currently, and if maybe there's gonna be something added, we mate, but for the most part, we keep them where they are and do the 2% for tuition and then whatever the transportation increase is. At that moment in time, we budget for where they are at that moment in time.
Right, but if you know that that's gonna be a change, you mean you don't take that into consideration?
I won't know that's a change until the annual review is sitting at the table, so no, I don't take that into consideration until we're sitting at annual reviews.
Right, but then how does the other districts take that into consideration if they're in the same boat? I'm assuming they would have to be in the same boat in December, they wouldn't know until they have a meeting in June if there's a difference then.
Right, I think, again, anecdotally, I was on the phone with Newtown, and I talked with Trumbull a little bit too, my understanding is in a number of these districts, they will carry some funds in anticipation of program changes, and I think, you know, again, I don't wanna get too far in terms of guessing at their reasoning, but I would assume, you know, they're making their best guesstimate in terms of how much change there will be.
Their timeline almost may also be different than ours, we have an early timeline.
Why?
I don't know why.
No.
It's the charter, town charter.
Yeah, that would be the town charter, we have to, per Monroe Town Charter, January 9th.
That's meant by early time, timeline, that I know.
So, right, in that regard, we have to have that submitted by January 9th, which means we're formulating, we're starting our meetings next week.
Yeah.
So, you know, October, November, we're establishing, are doing our best to establish what's gonna happen. As Jim used to say, you know, if the child was born, the beginning of this budget process, they'd be walking by the time the last dollar is spent.
Right.
We have that, it is a long window that we have to try to predict through.
And most of our annual reviews are in the spring.
So I guess what I'd like for the future then is for you to get more involved with them, or Trumbull, Westport, Welton, or Field, and find out what they put to the side, what special fund do they have set up? I appreciate the asterisk there, but have we always counted on the Board of Fin, has the Board of Finance historically, for 10 years, come through with it? I know you're shaking your head no, and I'm not picking on the Board of Finance, by the way, this is just the question thrown out there, I appreciate the asterisk, but it's not always gonna be there, it's nothing we can constantly count on, whereas if we had this account, whatever it's called, I would just be interested in how they set it up.
I can tell you-
And the money they put into it.
Sure, I can tell you for sure, what some of the districts do is there are a few of them that will not, they will not budget their excess cost grant as part of their budget, and instead, what they will do is they will keep that as a contingency, and then what's not used, they return to the town. That's one strategy that some of the districts will use. In Newtown, I talked with Laurie Rodriguez for a bit, she said one of the things they do is they earmark an allocation in their 10-248A. They say X amount of dollars of that will be allocated for special ed. Now, the statute about 10-248A says very clearly that that's an appropriate use, is special education contingency, so that's another strategy used by another district.
So we don't, what is our special ed contingency?
Our special ed contingency for this fiscal year is Board of Finance, and the monies that they've allocated was $400,000 as a contingency.
For the whole year?
For this, yes, for this year.
Is that only for us? Because I remember in June, when we had a meeting, Ken said that was the contingency in total the town budgeted for all the town, not just specifically for special education.
I spoke with Mike this morning, and I said, Mike, I just wanna go back to conversation, am I right to understand it's a $400,000 contingency for special ed?
Just for special ed? Because Ken said something totally different in that June 5th meeting. He said the whole contingency was $400,000, it wasn't necessarily specifically for special education for Board of Ed. John, can you shed some light onto that? Do you know often?
We talked about putting an amount aside to help out, but if other matters come up that may be more pressing in the view of the town's needs, that money may get diverted.
Okay.
So it's earmarked, but it's not a guarantee right now.
Right, it was for the whole, the 400 was for the whole town as a whole, not just specifically Board of Ed, special ed?
The contingency is always set up for the whole town, yeah.
It is, okay.
Right, so yeah, so that's not specifically for the Board of Ed, that's the whole town's contingency, and that's what Ken mentioned in that meeting, so if there was something else that came up, that would go to that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I don't think we can count on or say that the whole 400 is for us.
Gotcha.
So that's a problem?
Yeah, that is a problem.
David?
Um, Jeff, a quick, quick comment. A lot of times, we poll other districts to see what they're doing.
Yep.
And that's very useful data to us, to help make decisions. I just wanna make sure that when we poll all these area districts, that we're using that data to help us make decisions, that we're not following other districts. I want this district to be a leading district, so I don't wanna just jump on the bandwagon of what everybody's doing in all of these charts. My question is, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, are three nos that are there, do we have recommendations maybe later on of if we're gonna change any of those?
The three nos for which?
For Monroe.
For all three categories like that.
Do we have any recommendations financially that if we're gonna just keep doing it the way we've always done it, which has failed us, or are we gonna change?
You know, I think it's something we absolutely have to talk about, I think that it does, the current model is more reactive than proactive, I think that's fair to say, and to that end, I do think we need to think about how best to change it over time. I don't think it's something we can change within one fiscal year.
Yeah.
But I do think it's something we need to consider, okay, how best do we change this over time so that we're not always talking about how do we react to the situation, but what do we predict looking into the future to be able to manage this moving forward, rather than looking in the rear? All right, next what we have is, I'm gonna just switch over to some spreadsheets, and Frank is gonna walk us through the new model that we have for you.
I have a question. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
By the time we, we're gonna be heading into budget season in the next couple months, and by the time we hit that, that point in the school year, we already have a set of actuals from August through December, so when you go to, when you go to forecast a special ed budget for the next fiscal year, are you, are you including those actuals to date, or are you basing it off of the prior year's spend? How are you formulating that?
When I start my budget process next week, I take the actuals, which you're going to see today, I then increase tuition by 2%, and I do the increases that are in the contract for the transportation costs. Everything else gets increased by 2%, but when I budget, it's for every student on form three, four, and five, so we have a district now.
So, okay, so it's all the, it's based on the current data for the current-
It's based on September 23rd, right now.
September 23rd, okay, so it's, it's the current year.
Right, and up until December, when we present it to you?
Yeah.
It will change up until that point.
All right, that will, that, that will change the amount that you're forecasting for the next budget, right? You'll include any changes from now until December?
Correct, to December, right.
All right. And it's all known costs, right?
It's known cost plus a percentage of increase based on the current cost.
Okay. Okay. How do we, how do we try to ascertain additional, how do we get additional data that confirms that process? I don't know if we talked about this before I got here.
Well, and this, I think the next piece that Frank's going to present right now is a step in that direction. I think the projections you see here is, would you agree, Kay, that this starts to do that?
The next sheet that shows, we have sheets that we're gonna show you for our high-cost kids, because we have 36 high-cost kids that are the majority of my budget lines that are on the lines that are in question, okay? But in addition to those 36 kids, there are 400 other students that we're budgeting for that you don't see in this next few sheets. The projections, again, and Jack can, we've talked, I mean, we spent a lot of time today talking about this, the projections are done two different ways. I project, but then the excess cost is taken out of that. I mean, we have suggestions that we can throw out, they, I mean, there are suggestions we can throw out, but I don't, we're not there yet. I think if you go through the next, through slides, George, and if you still have that question, we can answer it, but-
I don't wanna jump ahead, so I just wanted to understand at least the baseline of what we're using today for data points.
Yes.
Jeff, the base lines, we use a five-year average though, correct?
For the excess cost calculation only, that's just for the excess cost grant, that's, so we get that grant to help pay for our special ed expenditures, but as you'll see in these sheets, you know, the total budget for our high-cost students is roughly 3.9 million, something like that, and then of that, seven, what was it, $800,000 is the grant from the state, so it's that, it's relative, you know, it's a relatively small portion of the total cost.
Jeff, what they're using for the five-year average is, what they're doing is, because your per pupil goes up every year, what they're doing is taking a five-year average of how much that increase in per pupil spending goes up, so that they can calculate, so let's say the per pupil spending this year is $18,000, they calculate what the average increase is, so they would apply it to that $18,000, and let's say it comes out to $19,500,000, and then they would multiply the four and a half times that we're responsible for, and then they would take that high-cost student, subtract what our quote-unquote "cost" is, because we have to pay the first four and a half times our per pupil spending to ourselves, and then they would calculate 70% of that, which is what the state reimburses, the difference.
Gotcha. I guess my question would be, is it, could we use that type of formula to help project out any changes just within our district, meaning, do we have averages on how many students a year change?
Actually, it's a good question, Jeff, because now you've just triggered a thought too. One of the superintendents did say to me that they do use historical average for new programs over time, so that is one of the strategies in use.
Yeah, maybe we use the average of how many kids within our district move, placement, or, you know, change, and help gauge better, you know, what we're budgeting.
That's good.
But that would be, again, and that's a great, I love the idea, but it's, again, it's giving me a placeholder of not an actual kid, and that's, I think, been the concern in the past. I love that, I would take that.
I mean, do we have any idea, I mean, you're going off of a timeline, right, that's not of our making, is that, do I have that correct?
Well, annual reviews can happen at any point during the school year, so yes, do we have annual reviews from now until December 1st? Yes, but the majority of our annual reviews with parents are in the spring.
Would it better help you budget though if we had, I know, I believe it's right, the town sets our, the date in which, I mean, would it be more helpful for us in making decisions about a budget if we had a different date?
I think it's always gonna change, Jeff, I don't think it matters what date you put on it, I think we just have to be aware, it's constantly changing on a daily basis. Like Darlene did these numbers on Friday, today they'll change, you know what I mean? It's constantly changing, we do the best we can with actuals. Again, I would love to predict, in the past, we have done that, and not taken the excess cost piece out of it, and that's given us room.
So why, why has that changed?
That just changed in the past.
Why?
I was told that.
Okay, I'm just curious, I'm just curious if it was a different set of nine people who changed it on you and said, no longer can you-
Just to speculate some, Jerry, I think when it was done, I'm going, this goes back, you know, a number of years ago, quite honestly, I think it was done to try and get a budget to go, you know?
To get it passed.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I can't say for sure, but that's my sentiment, having been around the table at that time, is that, you know, we've gotta find a way to make the budget go, and that's the way it was, was done to move things forward.
To budget to a number rather than to-
Rather than our children. Okay, so I wanted to know-
Help me understand what that means though. You're saying that you should leave in budget for the 70% that the state is supposed to cover?
Correct, because in the, if you, do you have that slide up or not?
I haven't gotten to it yet, I think, we're gonna cover a couple of these questions.
Can you just go to that slide?
If I could make a suggestion, if we, if Frank shows these next- If I could make a suggestion, if we, if Frank shows these next sheets, it will help to give some context to talk about this further. So we won't come back to the question.
Yes.
If that's all right?
Yeah.
But his information will help to fill it out.
Jack, I can't, I can't even read that from here. It's a way of making it larger.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can't even see where the plus is.
Sure, yep. All right.
This, that's, the, um, this is just a refresher that in order to balance the fiscal year that we just closed, we used funding sources from the security grant of the ten dash two forty-eight A and a few other sources. And I've highlighted these in yellow, you see them right here. And if, we took these three amounts, and when you see them in the hand I just gave you, five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars was applied to last year's budget from outside one-time revenues. And as we prepare the new budget, you have to keep that in mind that we took six, almost six hundred thousand dollars to balance last year's budget. And because it's a one-time review, de facto, it creates a hole in the, um, in the budget document. The next one, Jackie, can you make it a little bit bigger?
Sure, yep.
I can't, I can't see where the thing is from here. Thank you. This is how, oh, much better. This is how excess cost is calculated. And basically, we take the students, in this case here, we have one through thirty-six. And we calculate what's the total tuition cost for that student, total transportation, and we come up with the total cost for the student. So student number one was a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Student number seven was three hundred and one thousand. Student number twelve was two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. So you can see that the total cost, uh, it can get very expensive very quickly. The state said, says to the, says to the towns, um, we are going to help you out by mandating what you have to do, but we're not going to fully fund it. The state's saying, well, you have to spend four and a half times the cost of your net per pupil expenditure, in this case seventeen thousand eight hundred forty-six. And you take that number, multiply it by four point five to come up with a number in regard to how much, uh, you're going to be spending before the state kicks in. How much they're going to reimburse you. So, uh, in this case here, we're taking, this is set up so that this seventeen thousand eight four six, this is the one Jack was just referring to. This is the number that changes each year, uh, as far as looking at the five-year average. This will probably go to eighteen thousand based on what our net per pupil cost is. And this spreadsheet is set up now, if I change this one number here and make it eighteen thousand, it rolls through the entire spreadsheet and automatically calculates how much money we can anticipate receiving from the state. And excess cost has to be calculated on a per pupil basis. It's, you can't take gross numbers, you have to do it by student. So student number one has a total cost of a hundred and seven thousand. The state says, this formula, statutory formula, we're going to reimburse you eighty thousand three oh seven. The state owes us twenty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars, which is the difference between our total cost and how much state says we will give you, uh, for the excess cost.
No, no, that's what the state says, we have to pay for that student before they'll give us any money back.
This is our minimum that we have to spend bef-.
Right.
Yes, thank you, Don. This is eighty thousand we have to spend, um, out of our own pocket before the state kicks in with their reimbursement. So in effect, um, the state says, all right, Monroe, we're going to help you. We're going to give you tw- we owe you twenty-seven thousand one ninety-two, which is, you spent a hundred and seven, we're going to give you eighty thousand. We're going to give you, uh, twenty-seven thousand one ninety-two. That's what the state formulates, that's what's in the statute. Four and a half times what the base rate of, of the per pupil cost. But then the state says, well, we are in tight budget situation. We're only going to give you seventy percent of what we should be giving you. So we then have to take the state test says that they owe us twenty-seven thousand one ninety-two. The state reimbursement is only going to be seventeen percent, seventy percent. So in effect, the state says, oh, we're only going to give you nineteen thousand oh thirty-four. Well, the unfunded thirty percent then has to be absorbed by the Board of Ed. And then in effect, the total cost per student then is the base rate of, in this case, eighty thousand three oh seven, plus what the state didn't fund us, or eighty-eight thousand four sixty-five. And this becomes important because when you go through these calculations, and we scroll down, again, it's hard to read, uh, from the back, but for thirty-six students, the Board of Ed is spending three point seven million dollars. These are estimates as of today. By the way, I'm the interim finance director, but I spent the majority of my day doing special ed. And I'll call special ed director, what'd you do today?
Finance.
That's how it's got to be. It's got to be a very close working relationship between special ed and finance because they're so interclosely related.
But can I just, I just want to reiterate, he's up on the top of this, this is the estimates. Darlene and I worked on this for a long time, getting those estimates. Those will be firmed up more once the October one count and once we make our December first plan for excess cost. So this, this is a work in progress. These numbers are not held firm, they're close, they're estimates. But again, these will change before we put the budget out to you in December.
Where did the state come up with the four and a half times?
That's in the state stat.
What is it based on? Does anybody know? Like how they just, are, did they arbitrarily just come up with four, four and a half times?
I, I don't know that.
But to me, it should be, it should be two times rather than four and a half times. If the state's mandating a service you have to provide, why is the state saying they have to spend four point five times your base rate?
Yeah, I just want to know if it's just something that they just pulled out of the salary.
I don't know the history of how it wound up at four point five.
Okay.
Like it, it's.
And the seventy percent, have they always, has it always been at seventy percent or is that?
It varies.
It varies.
Okay, so they're not, do they, do they tend to stick to that or how often do they tend to fund at seventy percent?
Here's how it works. The General Assembly adopts the budget for the state. In that budget, they put one bottom line total for excess cost reimbursement. So I'll pick a number, say it's twenty million dollars. Depending how many towns apply for excess cost reimbursement will depend on how much you're going to get. Because that twenty million is divided up by the number of students for which the towns are applying for. So if you have a lot of students applying, you're central cities, if they have a lot of special ed costs, you could get less than seventy percent. Or if there's a lesser amount, you could get more than seventy percent because it's a fixed amount in the pie and everyone is buying for a piece of that pie.
And how, do you know how they come up with that, that overall number for the year?
It's a political decision regarding preparing the state budget.
Wouldn't it be, because our special ed rate across the state used to be about twelve percent. Now it's fourteen percent, isn't that slice of pie going to get smaller now?
The, it's been staying close to the seventy percent for several years now, uh, on the reimbursement rate. It's, it's, what they're finding is this. Individual towns are having wide spreads, uh, spreads in the excess cost that they're applying for. They can go up and down by the towns. But in the regions and statewide, it's a fairly constant number. But an individual town can get hit in any one year and go high or go low. But when they look at the overall pie, it's fairly consistent in the state.
Frank, quick, quick question?
Yep.
You're, um, you're lying all the way over bottom right, that two point nine four four?
Yep.
That's our cost for thirty-six students?
Yeah, they, that, yes. We're spending three point seven million dollars as of today. Our estimates are, we're going to spend three point seven million dollars, okay?
Get back around eight.
We're going to anticipate, uh, getting seven hundred ninety-eight thousand four fourteen back from the state. Okay? Our net cost, here's our gross cost, three point seven. Here's our net cost getting back from the state at seventy percent. Your, the local Board of Ed cost is two point nine million dollars.
Right, and next, next week, the state could say, we're only giving you fifty percent back.
Uh, they, they won't tell us how much they're giving us until after the December one filing. And then they look at how many students are applying and how many people are going for a piece of that pie. That's when we will know.
But that number can flex by the state, the seventy percent?
It depends on what number they put in their budget. I haven't checked the state budget to see if they funded the same amount in her years as, as last year.
It's never flexed that role, but again, anything is possible to set that up.
When you, when you start to look at excess cost, you see that this share of responsibility basically means we will share the mandates with you, but we're not going to share the funding. You have the mandates, you're required to provide these services. You're required to provide these services, um, but we're not going to quite fund it at the level it should be funded. And it really is a burden on Boards of Education because all the items in the Board of Education budget, of all the items in the Board of Education budget, you have control over those items, especially now since you have fixed cost for health insurance. You have control over all the items in your budget except special education costs. That is the one, uh, section you don't, you do not have control over. Because this case says, if someone moves in tomorrow with a mandate, you're mandated to provide those services. And it makes it very difficult for Boards of Ed to control their budgets when you have this wild card in your budget.
Frank, do you, do you have a similar chart? Maybe Kay can help with this one too, because you said these are, are thirty-six high-cost students and there were four hundred and how many other?
Four hundred and twenty-four as of today.
Four twenty-four, so do you have a similar, uh, bottom line cost for those four twenty-four-ish?
It's, I don't budget except for the high-cost kids. All the other kids are absorbed within the regularized budget.
Okay.
So these lines are the ones that I budget for those particular tuition, transportation.
That's because they're all placed up?
Some of the, some of the high-cost kids, some of our districts.
So the others are part of our regular budget?
And it does get to one of the other questions that was on the list too, about what portion of the budget is special ed? The last page of your packet has the pie chart we've shared before. And what percentage of the budget is dedicated to special ed hopefully? It's on the, uh, the slide packet.
Sure. Sorry, I know we're jumping around yesterday.
That's all right. Yeah, so this one you've seen historically, every budget packet we've had this. But this doesn't really, uh, describe things as accurately as it could. If you look at the special ed there, it says, um, right, four. But that, but what it doesn't tell you is that in the transportation, we, a portion of transportation is special ed. The professional services?
Other professional services.
Other professional services, thank you, a portion of that is special ed. When you put those things in, you're at seven percent. When you take all staff for special ed, it's about twenty percent.
And benefits.
And benefits, then when you take all that in, which is about at the state average.
So one-fifth of your budget on average is on words, special education.
Okay, quick question. When you have transportation costs zeroed out on some of these students, these are the high-cost students, what, what would a zero?
They take regular transportation to school on the regular school bus.
And they're, they would still be considered high-cost, okay?
Yes, because of other services, they're receiving.
Yeah, not every single one of these kids are outclassed out of district. They could, some of them.
But they got a personal tariff.
Right.
Correct, correct, but they're in our, in our.
It's a true zero transportation cost.
Right.
Right.
It's absorbed by regularize, is how I look at it. I mean, there is a cost, but it's absorbed by the regularize.
The way the formula is set up in effect, if you look at this number right here from the handout, you're seeing that the Board of Ed is being short-changed three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Just circle that number for a minute, I want to come back to it. And I'll show you what, one of the implications of that. But you're being short-changed on this formula that you're requiring to provide, you're, you're getting short three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And this chart, we will update on a regular basis. As Kay says, as we get nearer to the December one filing, this will be pretty well firmed up at that point. When we file on December first, the state sends us a check. They send the town a check of seventy-five percent of the seventy-five percent. They owe a seventy-five percent, but the first check is only going to be seventy-five percent of that seventy-five percent. The state says, we're going to, we require you to file again on March first. So when all these students are updated on March first, the state then looks at that March one update and says, oh, okay, did we overpay you on our first payment? Or did we underpay you? And so then the, um, the, the state makes that adjustment in regard to the second payment. And so that's where the, when you get that second payment, which is technically twenty-five percent of the remaining seventy-five percent, that's when we get our money. And the new procedure that Jack just explained is that previously, when this excess cost money came in, you had a grant over here, if stuff was being charged in the excess cost grant, and some was being charged in the Board of Education's operating fund. The new process now is that all expenditures are going to be charged to the Board of Education's financial, and you will see every month. You're going to have big deficits in your transportation and tuition on January thirty-first, you're going to have big deficits. When that first check comes in, in February, we're going to apply it to the, to the tuition and transportation line and reduce the expenditures. Everyone follow me on that? We are not increasing the Board of Education's budget. We are reducing expenditures, which is how the statute is set up, that this is to reimburse to reduce your expenditures.
Frank, when's that second payment, I'm sorry?
The second, we file again on March first, the second payment comes in in May.
May, thank you.
I was June, I'm trying to get it.
Yes.
And in May, yeah. And it goes to the town. And the town turns it over to the Board of Ed, which is not the case in all the towns throughout the state. I've been involved with lawsuits involving Boards of Ed and the town. The Board of Towns said they're going to keep it, um, but, um, here, there's no question on it, it, it comes there. And that's important because you've budgeted the net of your expenditures in the past, that's what you've been doing. You, you anticipate that excess revenue coming in, and so you reduce your operating budget, your request. And this year, the budget doc, we're going to show you the gross numbers. We're going to show you the anticipated excess cost reimbursement and how the budget is netted out. So that will be very clear and transparent, how this budget is being approached. The next tab, oh, any questions on the spreadsheet before we move on? Jack, can you make that a little bit larger?
Yep.
It's really hard to read.
Dave, this answers, or George, I mean, not Dave, George, this answers the question that you asked previously. So when he goes to this, do you understand what I was talking about living, about getting excess costs above and beyond what was budgeted?
These, this spreadsheet, um, is right from the budget itself. And we identify, uh, the object account number, again, the key in looking at your budget, your chart of accounts, just look at the last four digits. Thirty-two, the fifty-six-ten, fifty-six-ten, fifty-six-thirty. That is your key to getting into your budget, those last four digits. And then we describe outside agencies, uh, tuition, special ed, uh, system-wide tuition, special ed, public summer school, tuition, special ed, private, tuition, special ed, private summer, transportation, special ed, system-wide transportation, CES bases, transportation, special ed, aides. And this is the approved budget right here. And this is the approved budget right here. How much is actually in the approved budget? This is the number we're working with, this is the adopted budget. Two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, right here. As of today, total high-cost estimate expenditures with the new estimates, which we're going to show you the changes. We're going to show you the changes that have occurred since you adopted your budget. And they're going to come up to six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars over what you knew at the time when you adopted this budget. And Kay, uh, it's going to be going over that, show you exactly where that's coming in, or the questions the board members have asked, what changes have occurred. Right as to, you know, six hundred and thirty-three.
Frank, I can interject one thing too. What that six thirty-three doesn't account for is the students who have also left. So all it is, is the plus side, so any students who've come back from other expensive outplacements or have graduated from the program, there is that side of it too.
So we, and this is what we spent literally hours on today, trying to analyze this and see what it is. So we're saying right now, we're anticipating expenditures as of today of three point seven million dollars. The estimated excess cost, we anticipate we're seeing seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, which is in the spreadsheet previous to this one we just looked at. So we're saying that total estimate high-cost student service is going to be three point seven million dollars. We have to add in legal, because that is not an eligible item to get reimbursed for. And then the settlements, uh, that special ed has to make for another two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're saying that as of today, we anticipate expenditures a little over four million dollars minus the excess cost reimbursement of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand. Or we anticipate as of today, three point two million dollars in expenses. We have a budget of two point nine million. At this point, we're saying we anticipate a deficit of three hundred and seven thousand dollars in your budget for special education costs after the excess cost reimbursement.
So George, what I was saying before is if you look at the requested column, you see the three point eight that was requested? Okay, that's prior to excess cost. So if we went forward with what was requested, you would be to the good right now. And then whatever excess cost you got back in excess to what was needed, you would then give that back to the town. Two different ways of doing it, we've done it both ways.
So Frank, let, let me just see if I understand this. September twenty-third, forget about last year and our shortfalls. September twenty-third, a month into the school system in special, us, not special, I'm sorry, us. We're in the hole for over three hundred thousand dollars.
Or projecting, yes.
However you want to slice it, three hundred thousand dollars on September twenty-third.
Yes.
Thank you.
One of the things we'll be doing is going through, Darlene's going to walk you through new students and new programs so you have a better understanding of what those drivers are too.
Sorry, I just want to understand, so is this proportionate though? So you're saying that things changed obviously between April and now, right? But we still get seventy percent back of it, right? So that doesn't change. So is the, the three hundred thousand dollars, is that represent thirty percent of whatever the overage was?
This, three oh seven?
Yeah.
That is what we're saying, is that when you, all the dust settles and we file for the excess cost reimbursement at the seventy percent rate.
Yeah.
Based on the students we know as of today, we're projecting a deficit of three hundred and seven thousand dollars in your costs.
Now, one other variable in this is, if you recall last year when we did the spreadsheets, we knew that the excess cost grant calculation was too benevolent. So if you factor that into that, our guess is it was probably too benevolent by eighty to one forty, somewhere in through there. Around numbers say a hundred grand. So that's one factor of that three hundred is roughly a hundred thousand was that change in the excess cost grant, uh, calculation.
All right, so we budgeted two, two point nine five?
Yes.
And we think our actuals are going to be four point oh five?
Uh, yes.
Okay, but that includes, and that includes the legal and the settlements?
Yes.
Do we budget for those? We do, okay.
They just don't go into the excess cost charge, so it comes out as different amounts of money.
Right, but those should not be added in as, you know, making it look like those are additional costs. We should have thought of those, budgeted for those. Did those go up as well proportionately?
I believe that zeroed out, the forty is what we budgeted for legal?
Forty is what we budgeted and the settlement is up from what we budgeted.
How much is that up?
I don't, I can get that for you, I don't have that.
If you're, so to George's point, if you're adding that in, where is it being subtracted out on the bottom?
What, what we're doing is adding it in to come up with saying as of right now, we need four million fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Total, gotcha.
Then we're going to subtract out the seven hundred ninety-eight excess cost. And we're saying to finish the year, you need three point two million dollars when you add up all these costs that we have here, and your adopted budget is two point nine million.
Oh, understood, but where is the forty, if the forty and the two seventy-five are budgeted elsewhere?
They're budgeted in, in the overall special education, uh, budget. They weren't, they're not part of these numbers, they're not part of these numbers, we had to subtract them out because when we did the excess cost reimbursement, we could not include them in that table.
Right, I think what Donna's saying is they should be zeroed out because we already have the funds for them in another line, right?
Well, we do and we don't, we have the forty, but we don't have the two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
No, you do have part of the two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So we need to know what the differential is there, really, because that's what it, what it really is, right? So your total estimated high cost, that's, that's a projection based on where we're at today versus where we were at in April, right?
That's today.
That's what we think today is, okay. And so if you take those other two out, or at least get the differential between the budgeted amount for settlements and what the actual forecasted settlements are, then you get what your real total is as of today.
Right, it makes it.
Right?
We, we went back and forth on this legal clause.
No, no, the legal, but I think the legal we can take out now that they.
It's a different funding line and zeros it up.
Because it's still there, it's just not being paid there.
The two seventy-five-ten, a portion of that needs to stay in, and I can get you that portion, I just can't get it.
Right, so I guess the question is in the two point nine-five-two, okay? Is the forty thousand dollars budgeted in, in, it is included in the two point nine?
There's a different line that's covering it, yeah.
It's a different line, so then therefore that shouldn't really be there because you're adding, adding it in but not taking the where it's actually budgeted out.
And some of the two seventy-five should stay in, but.
Right, so where is, where is the two seventy, is the two seventy-five budgeted in the two point nine-five-two? Or it's budgeted elsewhere?
A part of it's budgeted in one of, in one of those, in the tuition lines.
Okay.
Okay, but it's not that whole.
So we have to figure out what it is.
I did not have that whole amount, so I can figure that out.
By taking it out, reduce your projected, uh, deficit down to two hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
And where's the rest of it budgeted, in a different, yeah? So of the two seventy-five, you said part of it is budgeted in there?
And part of it is new that we did not budget for. I might be able to get it for you right now, you just, hopefully.
Well, um, I'll see, looking for that, this.
I'll, I have to get it, I don't have the total scale.
But the, I think the point is that the hole is not as big as, as we're, we were showing it there, right? The hole is, is probably closer to two hundred K or less.
Well, as of today, it's a little over sixty-seven thousand, so. We will update this each month for you going forward. What I want to point out is this, this two sixty-seven figure is almost three hundred. If you look back on our excess cost reimbursement spreadsheet I gave you, and how much you're not getting from the state, it's almost the same number, three hundred thousand. The won't go thirty percent, the state is not reimbursing it.
It's the same at two sixty-seven, is the same as, as what, sorry, what?
The seventy percent that we're getting in excess cost grant, the thirty percent that the state is not covering. Statutorily, the state is supposed to be covering a hundred percent. Because they only do the seventy percent, that thirty percent balance, if they had given us that, would have covered that whole amount.
Well, yeah, because we're a million off from where we, where we budgeted, right?
Uh, yeah, without the excess cost.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that leaves you with the three hundred K.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, but we are, but we also budget at, budget at the seventy percent reimbursement. We don't budget at the hundred percent, so really that's not an accurate statement because we're not budgeting at the hundred percent, we are budgeting the net at seventy.
We are, true, the one error in there is the per pupil.
Correct, that is an accurate statement because we, that was not budgeted at the adjusted per pupil, which amounts to about a hundred thousand dollars. But the three, that three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we budget at the net, so.
Kay, will you put in the, uh, settlement number of two seventy-five, is that based on previous years, what, or what?
It's actuals.
It's actuals.
Up to the point in time of the year, but how, so you're not really in danger of exceeding for the second half of the school year, right?
That's this year, that can't, that won't go up this year.
Right, so, and, and at December first, you only have December, January, February, March, right? To get to the end of the school year, you're not going to, you're not going to see that, those numbers change a whole lot.
That line will not change this year, right.
Okay, but the, the problem is that we adopt the budget in April and the numbers are changed throughout the summer and into September all the way to December, right? So how do we cover that piece to make sure that we're not budgeting at the full one hundred percent? Because we're pretty confident we're going to get close to that thirty percent, um, uh. Seventy percent covered, but we're, uh, we're, we're doing a proper forecast based on history of how many new students we think are going to come into the program.
Okay, one of the thoughts, you know, that one we were touched on before with, with Jeff, is what we could start to do is look at some historical averages with that and present those to the board as one mean, means to forecast. That would be consistent with what we're doing with the excess cost also. So what if we did that for the next meeting and we'll put together, is that, let's, our next meeting is?
Monday.
Monday, maybe two meetings from now, we'll put together historicals?
Our next meeting is not like that, it's a week from, it's two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks.
It's the seventh.
Okay.
It's the seventh.
So what I'd be interested in seeing is what are, what do you think the options are, right? You, you've been doing this for a while now?
Budgeting for next year?
Yes.
Yeah, there's two big options you have right off the bat. You can budget gross.
So in, for, budget for the full hundred percent?
Full hundred percent, you can budget gross.
Which is the line?
And then when the excess cost comes in, that creates a contingency. Or you can budget net, like you've been doing, but add in a factor of two additional students, or three hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand, whatever contingency you want to build in to your own budget that you don't know, but you anticipate maybe a change of two students. So, and a lot of boards, you can do it either way. A lot of them budget net and then build in this contingency factor for changes in the special ed program. And remember, it's just not two additional, new students coming in. When the budget's prepared, you have to age out those students that are leaving the special ed program for a variety of reasons. So when you prepare the budget, you take the best information you have at the time, uh, and then you prepare your budget and you can net it out, but then build a contingency in, uh, for an arbitrary number, whatever you, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars.
But if you do the gross, George, you can see how close it is, and then that is, this, the excess cost coming back is your contingency.
Yeah. It's right on, it's, if you budget it at the hundred percent, you're almost right on the money, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the requested was three point eight and it's three point seven right now. So anything you got back would be in excess of what?
And Frank, any excess would go back to the town at the end of the year?
Well.
Or ten to forty-eight?
Yes, um, what, looking at it from the town point of view, if we, the town, are going to give you this gross amount, we know the excess cost is coming in, you could only use it then for special ed. You can't use it for end-of-year spending and other items. And it'd have to be, uh, uh, inform agreement between the town and the Board of Ed that you will only use it for special ed and whatever's left over will go back to the town.
Well, quite honestly, if I was the town as the Board of, of Finance, when I got that check in, I would keep that check and not give it to the Board of Education because then it's technically not the Board of Education's money. If they're, if we're budgeting gross, they keep that check as the excess cost grant amount.
And then we ask them for what we need, what we need.
Well, historically, we have handed money back.
Oh, right, but I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here with the town. If I was the town, I would be like, if you're budgeting gross, then the check that comes in from the state
I understand, it makes sense.
is a hundred percent ours and you get nothing back because you're budgeting gross.
Gotcha.
Right, that would make sense.
It would, it would.
And I'm just playing, playing devil's advocate.
To me, that's a proper sell, is to, to budget the hundred percent.
Right, but that's going to need to be a decision that the board makes as, at a meeting. Plus in conjunction with the Board of Finance, because, on, on, on how we're going to, to handle that.
I'm not agreeing with it either, George, but I think it's an option because I think we're in trouble because, and we've talked about this, we, we just haven't put out enough money.
That's why I'm asking for what the options are and a presentation of those options. So if one option is budgeting at the full amount, fine, what's the other option? And that's based on historical data of how many new kids are moving into the program, how many kids are exiting the program, and looking at those trends.
Give your next one.
Yeah, so to get back to George, we'll, we'll absolutely do that. We'll put that together with some options for the board so you can see what those look like and what the costs are with each one.
But that will, like I said, will need to be also a discussion with the Board of Finance because we cannot make that decision of ourselves. We're going to need to have an agreement with the Board of Finance on how that's going to be handled.
Agreed.
We can present both, yeah.
Well, once the options are presented to us, we are going to need to have a joint meeting with the Board of Finance and make that decision before we get to the budget presentation.
And remember that the excess cost reimbursement is going to be based strictly on how much you spend.
Understood, yeah.
So you have to spend it in order to get the excess cost. But as long as there's a full.
We don't have a problem spending it, Frank.
But there has to be full agreement and understanding between the Board of Finance and the Board of Education on how you're going to handle this. The last one we want to flag for you. I can't see it from here.
Yep, there you go.
I, I, I can't make it out from here.
Okay, okay.
Oh, good, you need to get a large step, please.
All right.
Good.
Okay, so as, um, as you heard tonight, we have four hundred and twenty-four students in district, twenty of whom moved in, um, after July first. So we have, um, twenty students who moved in that require specialized instruction. And that's one of the things that we can do to get your historical data, look at the summer numbers and, and figure out how many we usually have, um, moving in. Um, when you look at this chart, we have three students that were predicting, well, the excess costs. And again, these are all estimates because, especially on this one, um, that one of the students is new to the district and the program hasn't been fully developed yet. So, um, these three students, um, along with the seventeen, the seventeen others who have been absorbed into the district, so. Um, but these three students come at a cost of, right now, a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, seven, um, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. The next line shows that we have four students who have new programs out of districts since the budget was developed last December at an estimated cost of two hundred and forty thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy, uh, two hundred and forty. thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy, uh, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. The next line shows that we budgeted for twenty-three high-cost students. Some, some, and again, this is, this is, are moving parts. Some students moved out, some students are moving in, some withdrew, some we brought back to district this year. So, but we, when we budgeted for these twenty-three students, nothing changed in their program. So these students are budgeted at, budgeted at a hundred percent. The next line shows that we budgeted for an additional six students. We did put in a budget for them, but their programs have changed since the budget was adopted at an estimated cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hun, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then finally, on the bottom, we wanted to put this in because we have some additional costs, the students who will not meet excess costs, but they're included in those lines that you saw on the other slide. So we have fifteen, right now, we have fifteen thousand dollars out there for a student who will not reach excess costs. So the total as of today is an additional six hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, not anticipated for this budget.
Right, and again, that doesn't include the offset of the students who moved out, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And that goes on top of the two hundred from the other page, or no?
No.
No.
Gotcha.
Really, Derek, no.
That was calculated into the other page.
That was calculated into the spreadsheet we just showed you.
Can I ask why we're not netting out the cost?
Of the kids exiting the program?
It's a good question. We probably should have done it.
We could do that the day that they leave.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, as we're showing what the additions are, we're not showing what the subtractions are, so this is really not a net of, a, a, a net number.
Yeah, what you saw on the previous sheet is a net number.
Understood, but then, but this is misleading.
Yeah, this, this one doesn't include the outs, yeah.
And then how many new students, did you say, moved in as of July first?
Twenty.
Twenty, but they're not on here, they're not all on here. We also lost ten students over the summer, so we gained ten total.
Okay.
What is, what are the, the four and the six? So those are existing students with changes or new, what does, what does changes or new programs mean and?
The new program?
Can we budget for that?
The new programs are?
Can we know that going into budget season?
We don't always know that.
Yeah.
It comes out of an annual review after you've met with the team and changes are needed based on what happened over the course of the year. So the four students are students that were picked up in regular ed are now picked up through the special ed lines. That's what the four are. The six students are kids we budgeted for in the special ed lines, but their program changed even more than what we budgeted for. So that's the six students.
Okay, so the four are existing kids not in the special ed program that moved into the special ed program?
They were special ed, but they're absorbed in the regular ed program. So now they're, they're, they're in place or change.
Ah, okay, but they're, now it's increasing and going into, look at this one.
Correct.
And what are the, typically, the, the program changes? What does that entail?
It could be anything from one-on-one para, it could be behavior therapy, it could be access to a V C B A, it could be reading, it could, it could be any of those things.
And when do those evaluations get done to determine that they need those changes to the, to their program?
They're ongoing.
They're ongoing.
They're ongoing. But we meet and discuss the data in reviews. And sometimes evaluations come in from the outside as well. They're not done by us.
Kay, just off the top of your head, the ten that left, are, were any of those high cost? It's worth a try.
It was.
It was. Any other questions?
And again, I mean, I mean, truly, Dave, it kind of speaks to the services in Monroe. I mean, I think we have some really good services. I think when you move in, you tend to appreciate some of the services that you're getting if you're moving in from neighboring towns that don't have those services.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, tend to move back out.
Don't, don't misunderstand, misunderstand the tone. We all wanna support the kids and special ed kids, they need these services and we all believe in that and we all support that. But we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers, who most of us are, and, you know, to look at these numbers very hard and, and to prepare. I think a lot of good work, we've learned from our mistakes, a lot of good work has grown into it. And I like what I'm, what I'm hearing now, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna fix that, we have to keep moving towards that, so.
Yeah, I think that, I think that the, the questions that I'm trying to ask are around, how do we get to numbers that are as close as possible, right? Understanding that there's always gonna be a difference, there's always gonna be a change, somebody's gonna move in, somebody's gonna move out, right? But getting our prediction, our forecast as close, what can we employ to do those types? So when you're having these evaluations periodic throughout the year, is there a way to somehow conduct that evaluation on program changes in that December timeframe as opposed to waiting until March? I, I don't, I, I'm not pretending to understand. All I'm saying is, is, is there a way that you could try to get that baseline established earlier in the year?
There could be. And unfortunately, Jack kind of touched upon S R P I before, there is a length of time that you go through processes. So you gotta give it a fair shot before you jump to going to more restrictive. So things are in place, we're constantly monitoring it, but when we do come back to the table, we do the best we can at the time that we're doing it.
Okay, and maybe the, maybe the final, I know, my wife's a teacher in general, so she, I know that she goes through the evaluations with the parents and, and all. But my, my thinking is maybe you're not providing that final assessment, you don't have that final assessment ready at the time of budget, but maybe you have enough data accumulated where it could say, you know what, that, our best guess year-to-date is that we're gonna need to increase this, this child's program next year.
And if I do, I said that before, I do change it that time.
Okay, all right.
That I do.
Okay.
I've said, you know what, I know this kid's not gonna make it for the rest of the year with us. I'm putting that in now.
Okay.
But there's so much that happens after that deadline date and that I, I, I can do best guesses, but I don't have the hard, firm data that I would have after.
So we'll come up with a range of options for the board to consider and then talk about Board of Finance also?
Well, again, that will need to be a joint meeting.
Okay. Sorry if we move on to the next part of this. We can come back to anything as well, so. Sorry if we need to return to this. All right, one of the other questions that was asked a little while ago, and I wanna make sure that we followed up on this. Alan, you'd asked before about program reviews too. Remember at one point, in terms of whether or not we should do a study with special ed. So one of the things I did is I did some research on this. There are, have been some districts that have gone about this, Wilton being one, and I'm trying to remember who the other was, were, Wilton and gotta remember who the C E S district was.
I thought it was Ridgefield.
Ridgefield, could be, and then there was a third one too. And just to let you know, there are districts that go about having a study done of the special ed program to see, and it's to look solely at the programming in terms of what kinds of things are offered. It's not about looking at, you know, staff doing their work. We've got very good staff. The, and then how does that program align with what should be delivered in terms of standards? And those programs then dictate your costs, obviously. These program studies cost anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars, so that's, I wanted to make the board aware of that. And then the other piece of it is when these things are done, sometimes the, the recommendation is made to add other aspects to the program too. So I just wanted to make sure that I gave all that information for the board's consideration as we look at all aspects of our special ed programming in the district. High-cost review, we've done program changes, we covered, so back to the questions here. The, and I think some of these, as mentioned before, we took care of what percentage of our budget we took care of, how much does state and federal law dictate special education? We addressed that earlier also. When does a case go to hearing? Actually, three and four, Kay was gonna discuss those two together, right?
So when parents disagree or if a school district disagrees, either one of us can go to a due process hearing. However, probably before getting to that hearing, there are two other options. You can go to a resolution meeting, which is just the parents and myself and Darlene, the special ed administration, and you can try to resolve it that way. If that doesn't work, you can go to mediation where a state mediator comes down and kind of hears both sides and kind of, you know, tells us to kind of agree in the middle, that kind of thing. And if that doesn't work, it's when we go to a hearing. I've been doing this for ten years now and I've only been to three hearings over that time. So we do try to mediate and we do try to do resolution meetings, but again, things do happen. So that's how we try to save on legal fees, is by not going to the hearing. But again, if a parent is bringing a attorney to the P P T, we do by right have to have a, not by right, but we do, one, people, also a lawyer on our side of the table as well. But again, we're trying. I mean, we try to work well with parents because sometimes they feel bad if there's an attorney there and that's fine, that's their right as a parent.
And, uh, so that was three and four, right? In terms of the way that, that works together. And then number five, what has been done to reduce special education transportation costs?
We have all of our trans, outside district transportation are done by other vendors, which was a cost savings over All-Star. The only transportation that All-Star does for us is in the in-district kids right now. So that was a huge cost savings.
And over the last three, four years, it's almost, it's the vast majority of outside district runs, correct? How much can we expect to save if we had a local facility, regional center? So this is a good question. And the latest on the regional center is I had a meeting, as I mentioned, with the two superintendent groups last week and work towards a regional center continues to move forward. At this point, Tom McMoran, who is the superintendent of Eastern Reading Region Nine, myself and Jeff Kitchen, who is the head for the director of Ed Advance, the three of us are gonna be getting together. And what we will be doing is we will be drafting initial agreements with the participating districts because one of the things that needs to occur at this point is the districts need to come forward with seed money if we're gonna create a, a, a regional center. So that's in the works right now. At the same time, we have parallel work going on where myself, Ken Kellogg, Kevin Kelly, J P Schrodzinski, Jeff Kitchen, we're all getting together and we're going to work with the legislature to attempt to get state monies for seed money for this regional center. And we're hoping that that's going to get some traction. Jeff Kitchen is also pursuing this in Northern Connecticut as well with other legislators. So we're hopeful that the state will come forward with some of this money. If that doesn't happen, the fallback would be going to local districts. Now to get directly to the question itself, what will it save us? I don't know. I don't know. But the thing I would share is, you know, the definition of insanity is to continue to do the same thing and hope you get a different result, right? And so this is really looking at the problem differently. If we can get a regional center that's close to home and we've got the benefits of less time on the road.
Transportation.
Transportation, we've got a seat at the table in terms of making decisions about staffing and funding, then we've got a much better shot at controlling costs as compared to not doing anything, we don't have that opportunity. So it is still a work in progress, it continues to have good momentum, there continues to be good responses from the area superintendents, so there's still some good hope here. And the legislators have had some very, they, they're all over it because they feel that this is directly in line with what the governor has said about regionalization. Here it is. Here's the opportunity for regionalization that can provide students with excellent services while saving taxpayers' money. So State of Connecticut, if, you know, here's the opportunity, let's, let's stand behind the words and get it going. So we're, we're hopeful we'll see this happen. And the target right now is to have it happen by September one, a year from now.
How much seed money does Jeff Kitchen think needs to be had to start this program?
His projection right now, and this is a soft number, the, the number they used in our meeting on Friday was about thirty thousand a district.
That's, is that in it, is that where he's hopeful the state is gonna pick that up?
He, his belief is if the state comes in, he is hopeful if they come through, zero to each district.
Okay.
If the state doesn't come through, he's hoping for twelve districts at thirty thousand apiece.
And what is that cover?
What that's gonna cover is, once they settle finally on a facility, it would cover things like renovation costs so that it's fully up and running and ready to go. And then how are we improving our budgeting process of special education? As you can see from tonight, there's been a lot of hours and I need to thank these people and Joe, really, a lot of hours. Today was a heavy lift, but really for weeks, there's been a lot of thought and effort going into this. As you can see, this is the format we wanna use for our conversations going forward. So we've got one template, we will tweak and revise based on your feedback tonight. One of the things Joe is doing is he's got a Google Doc over there where he's keeping notes on the things we're gonna come, come back to, answers we need to get to you, including what kinds of revisions we need to make to these financials so that it's a good, solid document that we continue to work on together and have good information to inform what we do.
Can I, just a couple of things. Kay, Board of Education, we have to pay for summer programs as well?
Mm-hmm.
For special ed students? Is that for all four hundred and twenty-four or is that dependent on the program?
It's for kids that require it.
Okay, and that, that's budgeted?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, we're required to pay until they reach twenty-one years of age?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so every year we're budgeting that until they turn, yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions?
We budget for three-year-olds to twenty-one.
Three to twenty-one?
Yeah, that's what we're responsible for, obviously.
Okay. I think that's important for the whole town to know, you know, in education on what we're liable for.
Twenty-one for high-needs students.
Correct.
With a lot of services and stuff, not all special ed students.
Any other questions at all? All right.
Do you have any other closing comments?
Yeah, just that as we work through this information, we'll keep you posted on our progress and come back to report at our full board meeting so that we can continue to keep this moving, moving forward.
Anything, anybody have anything else?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
One request, when we're, when we're going for a budget this year.
That'll be revised.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we got it.
I'm sorry, so a motion to adjourn?